And welcome to the September 8, 2015, school committee meeting. We're happy to have you join us. This meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Media. The school committee would like to recognize and thank Tim of East Hampton Media for taping tonight's production. East Hampton Media, channels 191, 192, and 193 is looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy at (413) 203-1360. Superintendent Fallinsby, do you have some announcements?
I do have a few announcements. The next school committee meetings are October 13th and 27th, November 10th and December 8th, 2015. Meetings will begin at 6:30 PM. Kindergarten students' first day is tomorrow. There is a half-day of school on Thursday, October 1st, for teacher professional development. And there is no school on Monday, October 12th, due to Columbus Day. There's a half-day of school on Thursday and Friday, October 22nd and 23rd, due to parent teacher conferences. And I'd also like to take a few moments at this time to introduce one of our new administrators. Sarah Mochek has been appointed interim special ed director for this year. And Sarah, I'd like you to come to the podium and just say a few words and introduce yourself.
So I just wanted to thank Superintendent Fallinsby and the school committee for appointing me to this position. This is my 19th year here in East Hampton. I felt very, have felt very lucky to work here with the great administration and teachers and families of East Hampton. So I'm excited about this, this new role that I'm undertaking and look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. And we're delighted to have Sarah here. Sarah is an interim, so she has an opportunity to experience this position of Director of Special Education before she considers making a final decision about it. So, thank you, Sarah, for all the work you've done. She's done an amazing job of getting us up and running and an amazing job of creating a really smooth transition for the entire district and our families of children with special needs. So, we look forward to working this, this entire year with you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. To piggyback to the announcements, the first PTO meeting is tomorrow evening at 6:30 at the high school Cafe Commons. And childcare is provided by the high school Tiny Chats program. So it's 6:30 to 7:30 tomorrow night at the high school for the first PTO. And it's a district-wide PTO, so parents of students throughout the grades and preschool age are welcome to attend.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have any correspondence this evening?
No correspondence.
Okay, then we'll move on to gifts.
We do have a gift. A motion to accept with gratitude and appreciation the following gift, an anonymous donation of $100 for professional development at East Hampton High School.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We're very grateful. Okay, this is now the public speak portion of our meeting. And at this time, we invite anyone who would like to come and speak to us to do so and come to the podium and state who they are and where they're from. And it doesn't look as though we have anyone here who's interested in doing that, unless, no, I guess not. So, we will move on at this time to our finance subcommittee report.
Dan is our chairperson, he's not here. I don't believe that we have met since our last meeting, so there's nothing to report.
Okay, and our policy subcommittee.
Steve, happened to know?
Is the same.
Have not met.
Okay, very good.
Now, we acted on the most recent, at the previous meeting, the most recent policies and updates.
And we will have some new ones shortly to look at.
Okay. And Wendy Blumenthal is our Collaborative for Educational Services representative, and we normally haven't updated this time, but she's not with us due to a family crisis. So, we will move on to signing, oh, our discussion about warrant and payroll signing.
I asked for this to be on the agenda because Melissa Zwadowski, our Director of Finance, has provided us with this wonderful schedule that outlines when warrants and payroll documents need to be signed. And we all know it's kind of a crazy process to keep track of and manage, and it's kind of stressful for everybody involved to try to get the signatures in at the right time. So having this schedule, knowing when we need to come in in advance, I think will be very helpful. And so, I gave everybody a copy, and I was wondering if we might want to, we need to have three people sign at each time. So I was wondering if we might want to try to have three people commit to that and do that on an ongoing basis. And I, I'm not sure, I don't think all of us are able to take turns with this because some people work out of town and their schedules wouldn't allow them to be here.
One thing I can do, if I can get everybody's email that they check most regularly, perhaps it's not the school committee email, but you know, as Secretary, I'm happy to send out the email on the Monday to everybody's most-used email reminder saying this week warrant will be available Tuesday at noon till Wednesday 3:30, you know, reply all.
And we're also looking at, because I think there was a request to see if we could send you a group text on that Monday. So we are looking at using our school reach to do that as well, if that's what you would like.
And that works for me. I mean, I'm almost always able to get over, unless I'm literally out of town, I can get over and read through and ask questions and then sign. I think that's an important piece to add to this, is that the, the signing process is also an opportunity to ask any questions about any items that are subject to approval we, this process, and I'm not on the finance subcommittee, so I'm, I'm trying to be sure that I'm right about this and correct me if I'm wrong. But we also wanted to be sure that people actually preview what we're, what we're signing, because usually it happens pretty quickly here at the meetings, the final signatures. And so, part of the responsibility of coming over and signing is also the responsibility to preview and to ask about anything. And you always get a clear explanation of exactly what a line item is for, and that way the voters know that the budgets, I mean, the warrants that we're, that we're voting on have been examined by the school committee before we're signing them.
So we could certainly do that. We could certainly just have that kind of a communication process take place. Or, I didn't know if we wanted to try to have three people commit to do this faithfully for each week that it's needed.
Yeah, unless, like I said, except for being out of town, I'm one, who can do it?
I almost always can, unless I am up out of town to work. So, it's again, it's...
Right. So do you think it would be best to just put it out there for everyone to respond to? Or do you think we could have three people commit to this and then find a replacement if they can't do it? What do you think would be better? Which?
I think as a matter of sort of actual events, that's what's happened. I know that Laura often, I, when I look at the signatures, Laura is often one of the first to respond. Lori is one of the first to respond, and then I usually end up being the second or third person in.
Wendy and Dan have a hard time because they work during those business hours.
Right, and they're, and they're, and they're out of town during the business hours.
So it's really the four of us that?
Right.
Yep.
That do it fairly often.
Right.
So...
And this is also just really carrying us through December.
Right.
So perhaps they could respond to you, Deb, and if, if there aren't three who can do it, then you would know you would need to do it.
Okay, do you want to do that?
Yeah, I, I think the idea and having this schedule will be great, because it can kind of be a mental reminder that it's on the bulletin board. I think the communication's pretty good. I suspect, and I apologize, I struggle with her last name, but Maria sends me a note.
Yes. When she doesn't have the signatures or she doesn't know.
And she sends it at both addresses. I get it at both school addresses.
So what we were trying to do, though, is, is take that burden off of Maria to track us down?
Sure.
And just have us proactively know, okay, these are the dates we'll commit to going to do.
I mean, it's every other week, so it's good to know this is now we have a which week is in.
Just so Maria doesn't have to track us down.
And just as I'm reading this to be sure that I understand, so for example, the first one, it's Tuesday is the 9-1, correct?
Correct, right.
Right? And so it's available Tuesday, Wednesday's 9-2, and it, and we want it signed by Thursday.
Right, by the end of it. So they want you here by 3:30 in case you have questions, because they're going to leave at 4:00.
Right, right.
Before 3:30 on Wednesday of all these dates.
Right.
An afternoon on all the left column dates.
Yep.
Although it's often, yeah.
So, next week, right, a week from today, there will, the 15th, there'll be a warrant ready at noon that needs to be signed by the 16th at 3:30, reviewed and signed. Yep.
So, okay, so...
So I'll write, I'll write them down. I'll be one of the people who commits. You know, I would love to get a reminder electronically. That would be great if, if I...
Okay. Great, and I'll talk to Lori, and one, one of us will either do it or one will be the backup. We'll figure that out. Lori Ingraham. Okay, that sounds good. Thank you very much.
Can I add one other item to our discussion?
Sure.
I just, and I defer to the school resource officer, Shadle, but I think he came and attended all, most if not all of a presentation by Safe and Sound Schools that was at Williston last week. Melissa Gay, I'm just checking online that I've got the right person who spoke, I think that I want to say the right name, Michelle, I apologize. Michelle Gay is, is the founder, and she was the speaker. She's from Sandy Hook, and her daughter was one of the good souls that, that we all lost on December 14th, 2012. She did an awesome job helping us, Williston, think about ways that we can be prepared for all kinds of things, but clearly, and I defer to him, but I would endorse it. If he thought it was a good idea for us to explore having this organization come and speak, I would second that. I thought it was tremendous. Powerful, not something that people should know what the presentation's about before it happens, because it's tough. She goes through step by step her, her last 24 hours with her daughter and does it in an extraordinary way, and is all the more effective for that. But it, it would be hard for some folks, I think, not unless they knew that that's what the content was. But comes out of it, it's very, it's empowering about what we as adults who care for and care about children can do, and it really in the end comes down to very basic steps, most of which I think are already in place here. And again, I defer to Officer Shadle to corroborate that, but I thought it was terrific.
Thank you very much.
And on that note, I've begun to work with your security person at Williston.
Ann O'Connor.
Yes, Ann O'Connor. We're, we're working right now on relocation sites, you know, at each other's schools and drawing up a memorandum of agreement. And I think the more we can work together, the stronger both of our programs will be.
Yep.
Nice. Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda for my report are, is preliminary enrollment figures. And I wanted to take just a few minutes to talk about this this evening. At the, at last year, we've done this every year, and when I became superintendent, this was in place, that the preliminary figures would be discussed at one of our early meetings in September. And last year, one or another, or maybe several, school committee members asked to have, you know, more data on the enrollment figures, at more of a historical approach on the, on the figures, which is, is very understandable. However, as I was getting this ready, and I did ask Sue Colby to pull up the past enrollment data, which you have in your packet, as I was getting it ready, what occurred to me, which I've known all along, but just didn't think about in terms of the context of our school committee presentations, is this is exactly what it says, preliminary data.
Right.
So, even since this data has come out, we've had students enroll and probably have had one or two leave our district. So, then I began to wonder if a, a more thorough presentation of enrollment data might not be better to present to you after our October 1st data, which is our, when we have to submit it to the state, our final data. We submit to the state twice, in October and in March, so we could, we could actually do two sessions on that. I think that the pieces that you have here in your packet are useful in that they show, particularly at the elementary level, the student-to-teacher ratios at, at each of our grade levels. And I know that's something that's oftentimes a concern to parents. I think we're happy to see what those ratios are this year. We did some rearranging of classrooms based on the number of, total number of students at a grade level, so that we would have appropriate grade levels. And I did ask for the administrative assistants at the different schools to give me a little more information that actually is probably not included in this preliminary data. So, at the high school, I thought you might be interested in this, that we had 20 students transfer out, 15 to Smith Vocational. So that's really just going to a vocational program. One student to Hampshire Regional, and four students moved out of the district, left East Hampton.
Meaning moved, moved out of the city or choice to another?
No, moved out of the city. We had six new enrollments, and so we had a gain or loss, I guess of minus 10 according to the principal. In grade 10, we had, we had four who moved out of the district, not to choice, but just moved. We had six new enrollments, we, and so that was grade 10. So a gain of four. In grade 11, we had four who moved away from the district, and we had three new enrollments, so a loss of, of one. In grade 12, we had two who moved away.
That's you.
And one new enrollment. So again, a, a loss of one. That was the high school, moved down to the high school. At Whitebrook...
Do we know yet, Nancy, had any of those families petitioned? I know that sometimes when there is a move, you have to transfer. Sometimes they'll petition to choice back in, or any of that, is any of that reflected there? Are those are ones that have?
When, you know, and I can't tell you specifically, but when it says we have new enrollments, some of those might be those people coming back in as choice. So I don't, again, I don't have all of that data. I can have more specific data for you when we, you know, talk about it in October, if you'd like to. At Whitebrook, in grade 5, we lost three students. One was a choice-out student, and two went to Hilltown Charter. In grade 6, we had, we lost two students. One went out of district, one went to South Hadley, rather, and one left the district, sorry. In, in grades 7, we had, we gained five students. And in grade 8, we gained four students, and so there was a total gain, that doesn't make sense, but in grade 8, we had four students, gained four students. That was Whitebrook. At Maple School, we had, in kindergarten, we had three pre-K students leave because their families moved away from East Hampton. We had one pre-K student who chose school choice to North Hampton. We had one who chose school choice to Norris, and one who went to a private school. Preschool going into kindergarten.
I see.
Going into kindergarten. And of the new students, we had four families move to East Hampton. We had two late enrollments, and we had three school of choice. So we had, our projection was that we would have 38 students in kindergarten, we now have 41. For grade 1, we projected that we would have 43. We have 43, but the two fam, two families moved in, or moved away from East Hampton, rather, and two families moved into East Hampton, so. In grade 2, we projected we'd have 42. We have 40. Three families moved away, two went to private school, and three families moved into East Hampton. At grade 3, we had one leave for Hilltown Charter, and we also had five families who moved into East Hampton. And we had some transfers back and forth to, from Center Pepin to Maple, which made it even out, actually, 46. Grade 4, we had one family move, one student moved to Hilltown Charter, and two families moved away, and we had three families move into East Hampton. So, that was a, a gain. At Pepin School, we had, let's see, out of seven kindergarten enrollments, three students moved into, moved, there were seven new kindergarten enrollments, sorry. And I just asked them to tell me where they were from. We had one new student move into grade 3, and two move into grade 4. We had, we had originally three school of choice students from Holyoke, and they moved out of Holyoke, the city of Holyoke, and to another district. So, not moving away from us, but out of their home town. And at Center Elementary, we had six new enrollments in kindergarten. We had five new enrollments in grade 1, one came from Maple. We had two new enrollments in grade 2, and we had actually no new enrollments in grade 3 or grade 4. We had transfers from one school to the other. So again, this is still preliminary information, but after October 1st, I can give you exact specifics on transfers in, transfers out, and, and where our students went, or choice students who came to us and where they came from.
It does seem that the, I think we're recouping a lot now from preschool and into kindergarten and retaining a lot more there. I think the largest misconception that we have to deal with is entering into 5th grade into Whitebrook. Just what I, the feedback that I hear is there's some, you know, dissatisfaction with the facility, and, and some people are a little hesitant about 5th grade being not in an elementary building, but in a middle school building. But I think if we were to publicize more about the environment, that Meredith Foster's there, and the actual programs and curriculum, especially, you know, a lot of the, the work that they're doing with character building, if, I think that, you know, it would go a long way to just kind of clear up what seems to be a misunderstanding.
And I think we continue to try to work on that.
Yeah.
We need to do more, but we've had some nice articles in the newspaper about the Virtues product, project, and the Locker Projects this fall.
Right.
And, you know, I've contacted families who've sent us positive emails and asked them if they would do a Why Choose East Hampton story for us. We've had some stories posted about some of the good things at Whitebrook, but it's never enough, and I agree with you, Laura.
Yeah, we're thinking in the PTO of having things starting in late fall about that move from 4th to 5th grade. So having tours, having events at Whitebrook to build it, because choice decisions happen, you know, beginning December, November is the earliest people are starting to research that.
Now, that would be tremendously helpful.
And I think we've talked about that too during our school advisory meetings, too, the same type of thing.
Yeah, outreach advisory, yeah.
It's very, very helpful.
No, I appreciate all the efforts that everyone is making to help our community understand the wonderful schools that we have here, caring faculty, the wonderful programs, our facilities, you know, at, at first sight can be sometimes a bit off-putting, but they are well-maintained, and what's inside is what's important. We have just such a, a caring faculty, caring administrators, and some wonderful programs in our schools. And our parents who are here, I think, are very happy with, with the programs that we have here in East Hampton. And the good news is that the mayor and I and the Director of Finance are going to the School Building Authority again tomorrow for a next step towards a new building project. And so we're moving along as quickly as we can. We're excited about seeing what might be the possibilities for our older elementary schools and for our middle school.
That was one question too, and maybe, maybe that's, Karen, you can tell me if that's better for after the meeting, but a lot of parents that were at the initial PTO kickoff had asked if there was still room on the committee, and were asking what the representation was for younger families and parents of younger children.
Sure, that's a really good question, Laura. What happened was, there was a deadline to have the committee done, and we advertised it any which way we can, posted it. And anybody that was interested put their name forward, and all the names went forward. But we still will take names at any point in time, because as you know, the commitment to, especially if we're successful and get into a building project, you know, the weekly building project meetings is a large commitment. So you always have people that do the work, family engagements, work engagements, or, you know, just simply their time available might, you know, need to not remain on forever. So, we...
Should they contact you? What should, if people question us?
They need to send, they need to send a written request, and we keep it as simple as possible. It could be an email to my office. The appointments are made by me. And we have, I believe, correct me, Nancy, if I'm wrong, either two or three that have, you know, came in after the date and are interested, and I said, you know, thank you so much. I have a feeling that, you know, we're going to need to replenish names as we go along, but...
Are they closed meetings, or could interested parents attend?
They haven't started yet.
I know, but I'm saying, looking forward, could people just kind of be there to witness?
Absolutely.
Public meetings.
Yeah.
We encourage anybody to come and participate.
Exactly. We're going to want as much public eye as possible and feedback, and because that's what it's all about. It's all about our community. So, right, if anybody's interested, we make it as simple as possible, if it's easier for them. Most people, a lot of times, it's easier to just send a quick email. Very simple. I would like to be, you know, on the School Building Committee in the future if something becomes available, and, because I think we are going to definitely, you know, need some additional names.
But at the very least, people who can't make that obligation or don't, they could still attend and participate.
Absolutely.
So we'll let people know if they have a meeting tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
No, thanks for bringing that up.
Nancy, I apologize, I know that there's some risk in this, but in looking at the, the numbers and the discussion about this, I'm again, just going to say what I know is not popular to point out, but there's, there's a difference when you're, you know, a member of the community between what's legally right and what your legal rights are. And I think people can exercise those legal rights, but I think they exercise them in a broader context than just that. And I think it's valuable for people to look at this as, as a great opportunity in our schools. And I look at the names of these teachers and how many of them, you know, starting in kindergarten with Ms. Pulleyat, all the way up to grade 8 with Ms. Buston, there are plenty in between. There've been some who've retired since my children were in elementary, middle schools, but it's such a tremendous faculty and such an extraordinary, good thing that's available. You know, it costs the community money when families elect to, to choice out and to participate in charter schools. And I, that's just a simple fact. It costs money. Often, more money than is created out of the property tax revenue of that family living in the community. And as awkward as it is to point that out, if everybody did it, we wouldn't have money not only to be funding the public school system, but we would be reducing other important services in this community. You know, as a teacher, I often say to my students, there's a simple guideline about your behavior. What if everybody in the room was doing what you were doing? What would be the impact on the community of learners who are here? And generally, that's a pretty good guideline for good behavior. Whatever the rules may be, that guideline is good. And I would just ask families who exercise the decision to choice out or to charter out to say themselves, what would happen to East Hampton if everyone made the choice you made? And I'm happy to have the conversation. I appreciate every family has unique circumstances, has to do what's best for their own children. But if you globalize the behavior, the consequences are extraordinary. And, you know, in a way, the only way that some can do it is because some of the others make the choice to commit to the East Hampton school system. And because they do, we continue to have a good school system on offer.
And, and that's very, oh, excuse me, that's very true, Peter. I, I think, I don't think the average resident has any idea the cost effect of, of choicing out. Technically, you're thinking an average tax rate would be, for us, we have very reasonable taxes, one of the most reasonable in the area, so you figure if your average tax rate is like 3,000, it's a lot more than that for charter and choice. An old estimate was 5,000 and 10,000. So you're already way above it, just, just with one. And, you know, as you know, it's, you know, charter is more than choice, and, but each, each child, so. And, you know, we've been going over the figures, especially with the enrollment, you know, MSBA, and, and looking at exactly those things. And I think that, again, back to the perception, one of the things that we would like, if you are going to choice out or charter out, whatever, at least check our schools, at least, you know, come in, visit. And then also, what we've been getting at through, you know, the PTO and all the different advisory committees, is why are you leaving? You know, what is the reason? Is it, you know, a reason of more convenience, or, you know, what really is, is the real reason to choice and charter out?
Because that gives us the...
Exactly.
That gives us the opportunity to respond, which is part of the theory of charter and choice, is that we will be able to respond, but we can only respond to known, accurate information, so.
And along those lines, you know, we had talked last year about sending a survey out to all the families who have either chosen choice or charter. out to all the families who, uh, have either chosen choice or charter to leave our district. We're getting that survey ready now, so that will go out in the next week or so. It'll be a paper copy survey with, um, self, a stamped, self-addressed envelope to return the surveys to us because we do value getting that information and finding out, you know, what are, are there areas that we can improve that would, uh, would help, uh, us keep all of our, our community members here in our schools. Thank you.
Before we leave the topic on the, um, enrollment figures, you mentioned that official numbers come out in October, October one, and then you report them again in
March.
March. So what I was wondering is maybe we could ask Superintendent Follonsby if she would put together some kind of a report that, um, instead of listing maybe by teacher, but a summary after the October one information is ready?
By grade.
By grade? And then maybe just an average for class size? Um, so that we could look at that data, um, compare year to year to year and have one chart?
Class size. And the one other helpful thing would be number of classrooms in the elementary level. Because that is, that is the nice to see in the breakdown, that that makes a difference. Sometimes there's those birth years that it's just on the cusp at a little bit low, which means if you have only five classrooms, the class sizes are high. But if you add the sixth classroom, then they're much lower. So it's how, it's interesting to see if we have five or six.
No, I think the, the information will be, uh, far more pertinent and interesting at that point in time, and, and I would enjoy, you know, reporting on it then.
Okay, thank you. I just, I can't let this go, but I just have to say on the topic of White Brook, you could not find a more caring, loving, nurturing environment, um, than, in my opinion, than White Brook Middle School. I just have to say, my personal experience.
Well, the letter that came in this, most recently, that the superintendent shared with the school committee testified to that, a parent or a child and, and, you know, and she, she didn't even, there was no but. It was all
Yeah.
a confirmation of the great things that happened.
Yeah, it's a wonderful environment and just very, very loving, caring, nurturing, respectful, and, um, they do wonderful things there, and I just had to throw that out.
I appreciate that, as are all of our schools.
True, so true, so true. Okay.
All right, so, moving on.
Moving on.
Um, so the next item on my agenda is, uh, just a little update on opening day. Uh, we had the first three days of, uh, professional development, uh, August twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh. And, uh, I think they were, were great days for all of us. Um, I started the morning with, uh, a presentation. Uh, our school committee chair, Deb Luzneal, was kind enough to come along and give a, uh, statement to the faculty and staff, and that was very well received. I think they always just feel so pleased when, uh, school committee members come and, and, uh, share their thoughts with them. And it was a beautiful statement and, and very much appreciated. Um, I followed that with, uh, each year I try to determine a focus. And this year when I was, uh, oftentimes it comes from the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, uh, Institute in July that I attend every summer because we get the latest thoughts from the Commissioner of Education, um, and changes in policies and rules and so forth. They always have very, um, inspiring speakers, and they always choose a topic that is pertinent to us. And this year it was about having healthy schools and how do we have healthy schools? And talking about the data that we all experience where, um, we find that we have children who come to us with, uh, with challenges, uh, mental health challenges and, and, uh, and other challenges that impact their learning. And so what can we do to support those children? And, uh, I shared some, uh, data with everyone about that. And, um, and so I said that I thought that this was, uh, timely for all of us. And then I, I said that I wanted to share, uh, the SciTech band video with them, um, that morning. And, uh, in fact, I said I wanna finish this, uh, morning with a video, and I, and I told them that some of them may have seen it already, that I have already seen it several times, but every time I see it, um, it, it, I'm equally moved by it. And, um, it, uh, makes me remember in a, in a strong and positive way, um, why we are all here today, why we're all here in education, and that's because we wanna make a positive difference in the lives of our, our students. Um, Deb Luzneal was there. I think she would concur with the positive, uh, response that, that everybody had to that video. And if you haven't seen it, I highly encourage you to see it. It was an example of an exemplary teacher, but it, we have teachers exactly like Gary Bernice, this band director, uh, in, in, at Springfield SciTech. We have teachers exactly like Gary Bernice who are just as committed and, uh, do so many wonderful things with our students. But I think it's just an inspiration to us to see the possibilities that are there before us, uh, if, i- if we're devoting ourselves to the education of, of our children. So, uh, I think it was very well received and, and I also just said at the end, and I think, you know, after you see it, what it reminded me about is that every one of us, I believe, can remember a teacher in our past and the difference that they made in our lives in some way, small or large. And clearly, this teacher was a, was a shining example of that. So, um, it was really about, you know, making connections with kids and, uh, building those relationships and, uh, giving every child a, an equal chance and, and that positive energy that I think our faculty are, and staff, all of our staff, are so good at, uh, at, at giving our students. So, it was a, it was a good start. And, uh, and then we went on from there, and there was professional development in each, uh, building. And I wanted to just give you a couple of highlights about that. Uh, at the elementary level and fifth and sixth grade, uh, we're doing a new, um, literacy program called Making Meaning. I think you've had a little bit of presentation about that. So there was some really, um, in-depth professional development, getting our, our teachers ready and our, our paraprofessionals to, um, to participate in this making, new Making Meaning curriculum. At, uh, the middle school, uh, in addition to that, they had Adam Goldberg from Eastern Connecticut State University, um, doing professional development on implementing math practices into every curriculum. Uh, if you haven't had a chance to look at those, um, please check out the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's, um, mathematics standards, Common Core standards, and the math practices that are a part of that. It's really about good teaching and good learning. And then at the high school, um, they had Andrew Watson, who, uh, gave a presentation on the growth mindset. Um, the growth mindset is an idea that came from Carol Dweck. She wrote, uh, a book called, I think it was called Mindset. And it's about having a growth mindset and, and supporting a growth mindset as opposed to a fixed mindset. That it's about how hard we work that will help us be successful, not whether we're good at something or not good at something, mathematics being an example. Um, so that students are, are helped to understand that it's the harder you work at mathematics, the more successful you'll be, as opposed to, I'm not good at mathematics, no matter what I do, I'm not gonna be good at mathematics. So I, uh, had the ability to attend, uh, one of his sessions. He did a session with the White Brook staff and the high school staff. And then he did a second session, uh, more in-depth session with the high school. And, and that also was very inspirational. And then, of course, we had the freshman barbecue. Um, you know, I, I think that was Wednesday evening. So it was really a wonderful three days. Uh, I think it was, uh, some wonderful professional development, helped us, um, uh, become, uh, that strong community that we are, welcome our new staff. We have some amazing new staff who have joined us this year and, uh, new people in administrative positions. So I think we're off to a great start. And, uh, the first day of school, I was out in the buildings and everything seemed to be going smoothly. Uh, lots of happy faces, uh, students happy to see their teachers again, which also is an indication of, of the kind of staff we have, that, you know, as I say, um, you know, I, I would see, uh, our students and their faces just light up when they'd see a teacher that, you know, they had in the previous year. So I think we're off to a great start. I'm excited about this year and, uh, look for, forward to many good things. And that is the end of my presentation, unless anybody has any other questions or?
I can't talk about it.
You what?
I can't. I can't talk about it?
I've already cried three times today. It's gonna be a great year.
It is.
It will say.
It will be a great year. So this evening I also have, uh, Allison Rubello, our newly appointed principal at Center and Peppin Schools. Allison was our, our, uh, middle school principal for a number of years. Needed to step down for, uh, health reasons. Took a position as an assistant principal at Center and Peppin. And when our, um, principal, Amy Napolitano, uh, resigned to accept a new position, I immediately went to Allison and asked her if she'd be willing to step up as, as, uh, at principal. And, uh, I was delighted to hear her say that she was. Um, she's here tonight to present the, um, school improvement plans along with Judy Avril, who's our principal, relatively new principal. This is her first full year at Maple School. Um, and they, uh, are doing their plan together because we really want our elementary schools to be as consistent as possible. In this way, they're able to work together and their staff are able to work together. So, uh, Judy and, and Allison, I'm gonna invite you to the podium to, um, give a presentation.
Can I just say we're just so happy to have you in this role, Ms. Rubello?
Thank you. I'm very excited to be back in the role of principal, and Center Peppin staff has been wonderful with supporting me back in this role, and it's, it's great to be there.
We're very excited.
And I get to work with Ms. Avril, so, um,
Dynamic duo.
That, yeah, we, we, we do make a good team.
It's a good team, so we're very happy.
This is gonna mess up the math rubric, but one plus one sometimes equals more than two.
It does.
I would agree.
Oh, thank you.
So I'm gonna, um, you have in your packets our goals, and as Superintendent Follonsby said, um, Judy and I wanted to work really closely together to really make sure that the elementary experience is a good experience, whether they're at Maple, whether they're at Center, whether they're at Peppin. And so a lot of that goes into our school improvement plan and making sure that, um, students are getting a good experience wherever they go and
And a big part of our professional development is done together. And so again, our professional development is driven by the data which drove our goals, um, as far as what teachers need and where we need to move forward. So having an aligned goals helps us to have aligned professional development, which has been really positive. And we really did get off to a great start this year with some positive, uh, PD that was really instrumental in where we're headed. So it was pretty exciting.
So we thought that what we would do is just briefly go over each of the goals, seeing you have them in front of you. That way, we don't have to read them specifically to you, but just give you a, a brief summary and then see if you had any questions. So our first school improvement goal has to do with developing a classroom model that supports all learners, um, in order to improve our achievement in mathematics. So that's talking about the achievement of our special ed students, to our Title I students, to our regular ed students, and to our top students. So really looking at developing this model that's going to help students with wherever they are, um, you know, on that achievement, growth, and, and helping them. And so one of the things that both Judy and I are gonna be doing is really working with the classroom teachers to develop this classroom support for the classrooms and working on this ongoing formative assessment. Because we know that the more that, um, students have this ongoing formative assessment, the teachers can use that data to really determine where students are. Um, because we know that some students may do an excellent job with geometry, but then when they get to some other number work, they may struggle there. And so really looking at, you know, where is each student's strength and weakness and, and being able to help them with wherever they're at. Um, being able to work with the teachers to, um, really help them use the math practices in their instruction. You heard Superintendent Follonsby say that, that White Brook was working on that as part of professional development as well. Um, but there are really good, um, you know, teaching practices that teachers should be using. And really looking at what just district-determined measure we can use. So we know that the state and Desi say you need to have these certain things in, you know, in place. And so we're looking at, how can we do something the state is asking us to do, but really have it be worthwhile to what we're doing? We don't wanna just do something just because it's a state mandate. So what can we do to really help us look at, you know, how, what the students are doing and how we can support their learning? Our second goal is around the balanced literacy block with integrating Making Meaning and Being a Writer into all grade levels. So we had some teachers who were able to pilot the Making Meaning program last year, and there was such success with it. And the students, anytime that I went into the classroom, and, and I think Ms. Avril would, would say the same thing, anytime that we were in the classrooms, we could see the difference in students and how they were participating in the lesson and the enthusiasm. And teachers were reporting back that it was really good. And so we are doing that across all the elementary schools this year and also implementing Being a Writer. And so we're working with Kim Gilbert, who's our literacy coordinator, and ensuring that we can do the program with fidelity. We wanna make sure that every teacher is, is doing the same program and that people aren't choosing bits and pieces, um, of that.
And we're really focusing on kindergarten. Kim is gonna be really embedded in our kindergarten classes, and then we'll move her up as we bring this on so that we're, we're gonna really shift grade level by grade level. While everyone's gonna be doing it and we'll be supporting all teachers, and Kim will be supporting all teachers, but her primary focus this year is going to break, to be, um, bringing this balanced literacy block into the, into the kindergarten classrooms. So that's very exciting.
Could you just take one minute to explain, just a little bit about the Making Meaning?
Making Meaning is a component of the balanced liter- literacy block. So we have, we have, um, guided reading, which will continue. We have the writing. We have word work, which is the Fontes and Pennell, um, word study. And then we have the Making Meaning. And what it is, is it's a comprehension program, and it's very interactive. So there's a lot of, it, it's really, what we loved about it was that it really, um, built on what we're learning in retail, which is our sheltered English instruction program. Um, so everything that teachers are learning right now fit. It, it's just really addressed in the Making Meaning program.
So using real literature with students, so, um, looking at, you know, having students read real literature with a teacher and asking questions. And then there's a whole social-emotional piece that also goes along with it. So in addition to literacy block and comprehension for students, it's asking them things that they're gonna need for the real world about, so how did you help your partner as you were working on this? Or, you know, do you think that you did your very best on this part? You know, how could you contribute more? Questions like that to get them thinking about how they're a part of the classroom community, which hopefully will lead into, you know, the world as their citizen.
And it really helps them be active learners. I mean, we want them to be active participants in their learning. It's not a passive sport. You know, they really have to, they have to be involved, and, and they want to be involved. And so that's what Allison's talking about when we've seen such a difference just in those pilot classrooms. I, the student engagement was incredible. Um, and so this is where we're headed, and it's really exciting.
The conversations were really rich. Um, you could walk into a classroom, if you walked into the classroom, they could be talking about something that they may have been studying a, a year ago, but the conversations were very rich and, and how their thinking was about the text and thinking about how it related to them and thinking about, you know, what was it in, in the way that they use the vocabulary? Um, there's an example where there's a kindergarten book that has to do with a bus ride. And so they might've talked about the word swamped or, or something to that.
Squished.
Squished.
That's right.
And so they, they talk about, the kindergarten students come up with, well, what is, what exactly does that mean? What does it look like? You know, what would be another word for that? So it's really using the words from the text to help them make these associations.
And this emphasis on vocabulary, one of the things we noticed in our pilot classrooms was that students were really pointing out in other texts when they'd find a vocabulary word and really getting excited about it. So, and it comes back, it circles around. So it, it really, um, made an impact and, and it continues to, so.
And I would, uh, love to, um, bring any of the school community members who'd like to come and visit a classroom and see a Making Meaning lesson.
I'd love it.
It'd be wonderful. We'd love to have you.
The impact, so for example, children on the spectrum, like my son, are typically are learners that go through rote memorization and parroting. So he can learn, he can read beautifully, but the context was really lacking. And so after this kind of instruction, what happens is that he starts to understand the feeling and the social-emotional connection with that, which then leads them to this summer, he would seek out other kinds of literature, which turned out to be graphic novels. But he was motivated enough to seek that out because he wanted to read. Didn't mean he wanted to read maybe standard, but he was finding some way to find something to make that connect, you know? So it really, it builds on itself and it came through.
And, and one of our primary goals this year is to really make sure that our children with special needs, children who are pulled out for, um, special ed services are not being pulled out during this time. Because the core instruction is so rich, we don't want any children missing that. So the, the, we're re-looking at how we're administering special ed and Title I services to really preserve this. And I think that's gonna be, we're gonna see an, an impact because of that. So it's exciting.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, just email me or call me.
Yeah, you're certainly, any of you obviously know that you're welcome in our building at any time. And I know that the teachers enjoy seeing you. The mayor was at some of the PD. And I know that that's one of the things that the teachers talk about as well, of seeing you there. They know that you care about what they're doing.
Well, it's very exciting for me.
It's win-win.
It's great.
Yeah. And then our third goal is community engagement and communication and engaging families and community. And this is something that's really important to both Allison and to me as we move forward. I think it's something that is just so vital in having a strong school. So we'll continue to use Power School. We've moved on to the email lists instead of the all-call. I know the all-calls can be really invasive when they come at times. So we're doing more of that non-essential communication through emailing, mass emailing for families, which we're getting very positive responses to. We have the Facebook page now and that has been really catching on. And I think that both the district Facebook page is gathering viewers on a daily basis, which is wonderful. Our websites, we're continuing to update and strengthen and even to look at new formats for that. I mean, right now, we have our current formats. But it's nice that the high school is helping us look for other easier ways of managing our Facebook pages. So that's something that we continue to strive to improve. Just really getting those flyers in the backpacks. Last year, I did a survey with parents about how they want information. And the flyer in the backpack does still seem to be a high one. Sometimes it feels like they never really get looked at, but parents do want those. So we're doing multiple means for the same event. But just, you know, getting it on the website, getting it out to Facebook, getting the flyer in the backpack, sending out an email, just to really let people know that we want them involved in these activities.
And we know that, you know, some families like email better or Facebook because they're right there with the social media. Other parents are like, I just want to see the note, you know, in the kid's backpack. That's what I want to do, I'm not online at all. And so we're trying to make sure that we can reach everybody with whatever they're comfortable with as well.
And then just really working with the media to make sure that we can publicize what's happening in our schools. Because there really is great things happening on a regular basis. Maple's gonna be having our Science Night. It was canceled last, in June, for rain two nights in a row. But we're doing it again and we're gonna be publicizing that. And it is open to Maple Center and Peppin, even though it's at Maple. And so these are the things that we want to be having so that children feel a part of our community and that the school is a place where they come. So, any questions on any of those?
Great, great things. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks. Like we said, come on in anytime you want to.
Sign us up.
And it's fun to see the gardens when you're over there as well.
Thank you very much.
It's Bill Rabello and.
Okay, are you finished?
Uh, yes, I am.
Moving on to our minutes from our August 11th, oh, August 11th, I guess? Yeah, I guess that's right. No?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess that is right, okay.
Well, there's.
Was it in our?
It's, we have it electronically. Don't we?
I don't have it this summer. Okay, thank you. All right, motion to, I just have to say, motion to approve the minutes from the Regular School Committee meeting on August 11th, 2015.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
I have to abstain.
Oh, that's right, I do too.
So.
Um, Allison, if Peter and I are abstaining, chances we weren't there.
Okay.
Then we can't, we can't vote.
Right, so I think a vote needs, right, the vote needs to be postponed.
To move it to the next meeting. We can't, we need a farm for that.
Good, thank you.
Okay, warrants and payroll. Sorry, I typically pull this on ahead of time, I was so engrossed in the conversation. All right. Motion to approve the school payroll dated September 3rd, 2015 in the amount of $468,288.95. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated September 3rd, 2015 in the amount of $97,618.96.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the school payroll dated August 20th, 2015 in the amount of $297,297,852.11.
Second?
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated August 20th, 2015 in the amount of $61,082.63.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Allison, I can give you a hard copy of that if you didn't.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, the chair could reread the number. She's dodged that.
I'm sorry, but I have, I have to tell you that. I love how our principal's side job is to collect the beatings. I think that's really the above and beyond part of setting in.
We greatly appreciate it because.
So hang in there. Are we, we're just noting that your notes are in, your goals, Nancy, are in our notes for this meeting.
Yes, right.
Uh, motion for a transfer, hang on, oh, it's on paper, sorry.
It's right there.
Yep, thank you. Motion for a budget transfer in the amount of $12,000 from the SPED Tuition Collaboratives to the Medical Therapeutic at Whitebrook Middle School. Because there's no student at the collaborative presently, and this is to pay a bill for one-to-one nurse for a student in an OCD program. So that was a motion.
Second?
Motion.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
How, you may want to give her a succinct version of that motion.
Okay, so here you go. Just, again, it's a motion.
Actually, it's right here, she can copy it from here.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, sorry. This will be even, I lied about that one being succinct. Motion to adjourn.
A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
See, that was easier.
Thank you very much.